Meeting Twitter, I'm sorry. Video guys, were you ready?
Ready.
Okay, thank you. Um. Roll call.
Mayor Reese. Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Sholdus.
Here.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Here.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Osmus.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly. Councilmember Fagerly is excused from tonight's meeting.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proposed additions or deletions?
Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
I would like to revisit the Wilmer City logo and put that right before community pride.
Which is that under?
It'd be after 90, right before 10.
9F.
Okay, um. Consent agenda. Kyle?
We'll be voting electronically tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We'll need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. With the addition, excuse me.
We get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
I'll be an eye.
Okay. The votes should be on your screen to vote. Are they showing up?
No.
I'll be an eye.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. Approve the consent agenda items. Motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your consideration tonight, on the consent agenda is the approval of the city council minutes of February 5th, 2024, the municipal utility commission minutes of February 12th, planning commission minutes of February 7th, accounts payable report from February 1st to February 16th, 2024, the Bethesda fourth edition final plat, accept and authorize final payment of project number 2303, the 23rd Street Southeast Area Improvements, wastewater plant roof replacement, approved plans and specs, authorized advertisement for bids, 2024 equipment certificate with resolution intent to reimburse, the wastewater municipal pump replacement, Wilmer High School trap team lawful gambling application, Wilmer Fest Incorporated lawful gambling application. And for council's information are the director reports, the planning commission applicant, and the January 2024 permit report, building permit report.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You got a motion and a second? Yes, Audrey.
Um, I would like to pull item E. I am just interested in hearing about the sidewalk that was discussed at the planning commission.
Okay. We have a motion on the rest of it?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to move forward with a vote on the remaining items and then go back to the removed item from consent?
Sure.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven ayes, zero nays.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, you pull item number, or item letter E, but that's the fourth edition final plat. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Um, I was just curious, I know there was discussion regarding the sidewalk on, I'm trying to think of the street now, and it looks like the final plat doesn't require the sidewalk. I just wondered if you could share that conversation and your thoughts behind not requiring a sidewalk.
Yep. Um, so we did meet with Bethesda and representatives of Bodem Inc. at Planning Commission, um, on February 7th, and a conversation about a sidewalk being built in on the east side of the parcel with the plat, and it is not required, it is something that, um, we potentially did want them to, to install, and, um, I think we still have outstanding, um, comments from our engineering, um, department that's working with, um, Bodem Inc. to make sure that, um, they're able to either do it, or if they decide not to, um, it, but it's not a requirement.
Okay. You say the east side of the project, so not the street?
The west, no, it is.
The west side. It is the west side, okay.
It's closer to their, their existing site.
Right, and their entrance is going to line up with their entrance on the other side, right?
Correct, yes.
So, all right, I'm just curious, it's a fairly busy area with traffic both for Bethesda and others, so.
Mm-hmm, and this is just the final plat, I think, um, they haven't presented any of the buildings and things that they're going to do, so we can revisit that conversation at a later date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve Bethesda fourth edition final plat.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. Which are we on?
Open forum.
Open forum?
Oh, okay. Do we have anybody?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up for open forum this evening.
All right, thank you. Are we addressing E then?
We'll do 90.
All right. Regular business. Project numbers 2401A and 2401B, approved plans and specs, ordering advertisements for bids, Jared.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
And he just appears.
Pardon?
And he just appears.
Good evening. Uh, in closing your packets this evening is the approval of the 10th Street and the 13th Grayson Rice Avenue Improvement Projects for 2024, the plans and specifications have been prepared, and we're recommending a bid opening date of March 20th at 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. respectively for the projects, and there is a resolution in your packets this evening for council consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Tom.
On Grace Avenue Southwest, are we going to be adding a sidewalk into those residence?
No.
Okay, because I know that was a big concern.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
After motion. Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thanks, Council.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Um, am I in? Are we, is that why we're still doing roll call? Or?
Okay, we can try it again, but it might, we might be having technical difficulties tonight.
Oh, okay.
Well, if the council's okay, we'll keep.
Okay.
It's always a little awkward for me in trying to figure out if we're, if we've got the second, or are we voting? Because I, I just say, roll call, and we vote, and that seems awkward to me by the way we used to do it.
I just, mine was glitching earlier, so I didn't know if you were waiting on me. I was going to let you know I thought I was in, okay.
We'll wait on you, Julie.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, the next item is Cura, approval of purchase agreement and set a hearing date. Aaron. Oh, did I skip?
E.
Oh, I marked it off. All right, Justin.
We can mark it off if you like, that's fine.
Plow truck purchase and reappropriation. Go ahead, Justin.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening, and good evening, council members. Uh, the item that you have for your consideration tonight is the request for purchase and replacement of two dump trucks with snowplow equipment. One of the dump trucks was requested late last year in the 2024 CIP to be purchased with a vehicle certificate along with the fire truck and the road grader, um, so that one's probably more fresh in your mind. Um, the second dump truck was actually, um, requested and approved back in January of 2022, but it was never fulfilled because of shortages with the chassis, um, which I don't think is news to anyone with shortages of equipment and, and things like that. Hopefully, we won't have to worry about it going forward and that they've caught up, but it has set us back two years. Um, since that time, the, um, state contract expired, and they have another state contract, so prices have gone up, um, which is unfortunate. Uh, we only had $220,000 allocated in the 2022 CIP, and to make up for that difference, we are requesting that $75,000, um, that was dedicated for the Public Works floor drain project be re-appropriated to cover that difference, so we would skip doing our floor project at our shop to make up for the price. We talked about it as staff and felt that getting the dump trucks was more important for us at this moment, so I will stand for any questions you may have.
What year are the trucks that we're replacing?
One is a 2011, and I believe the other one is a 2013.
Question?
Yes, Mike.
What's the condition of your floor that you're passing up?
So it's a, a center, it's in our original shop, it's a center trough system, um, the grates have become rusted and corroded, and we've just kind of been limping it along. Um, it still drains, it's just not the ideal setup for what we have, and so, um, we feel that we can get by with that.
No danger involved with?
No danger, no, no, it was, it would be, we'd be just fine, all right.
All right, we've got the motion. Any questions? Roll call.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the dump trucks.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you.
The motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, uh, there's two actions with this agenda item, the first action was to approve the purchase, the second action will be a resolution to reallocate the funds as previously described.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Justin. Next is, uh, Cura, that's a approval of purchase agreement and setting of a public hearing date, and I'll call on Aaron Bachman. Hello, Aaron.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. With me tonight, uh, off to my right is Tom Opets, president and CEO of, uh, Cura, and so we're pleased to have him here tonight. Uh, since the fall of last year, uh, Wilmer and EDC have been working with Cura, a Haynesville based nonprofit organization that owns about, uh, 1,200 housing units, four seniors in Minnesota. Uh, the proposed site is on the south side of Wilmer Avenue, west of Central Care Care Center. Uh, Cura is proposing a three-level facility that would include heated parking at grade with access off of Wilmer Avenue. Under an early access agreement, they have already undertaken soil borings of the site and have determined that, uh, they continue to be very interested in the site. Those borings basically informed them that they would not do underground, uh, parking, but they would do at grade, that would be heated. Uh, Cura, uh, Cura, uh, Cura, I should say, likes the site and the nearby municipal trails. They are very much open to partnering with the city's park and rec department on programming. Uh, the purchase price for the 5.54 acre site is 150,000. In addition, Cura would be paying, uh, a park dedication fee estimated at 10,500, and not insignificant, if this would be a significant contribution on their part, uh, they would be, um, handling, uh, a significant portion of the stormwater improvements that are required for this project. Now, at this time, what I would like to do is walk through the, the PA, the purchase agreement, and you should have a copy of that, starting on page 153. Uh, the purchase agreement is, as I mentioned, between Cura and, uh, the city of Wilmer. Uh, under recitals, uh, the seller intends to subdivide the land such that the parcel of approximately 5.54 acres, uh, which is, uh, described in Exhibit A and depicted in Exhibit B, seller is willing to sell the interest, its interest in the property as is. Uh, as I mentioned, the purchase price, there would be a $5,000 earnest money that would be, uh, deposited, um, or delivered to the title company. Balance would be paid at closing. Uh, if you go to page two, uh, under option to repurchase, and we've, this is similar to other projects that we've had over the years. Seller, uh, shall retain, uh, conditional option to repurchase the property valid for a period of three years from an after-closing date, uh, for an amount equivalent to the purchase price. Seller's option shall only vest upon buyer's failure to commence construction of a senior rental housing and assisted living facility on the property within two years. Permanent easements, a permanent easement, and this is at the bottom of page two, uh, is 70 feet in width for utility road of right-of-way drainage and trail purposes over and under across a portion of the eastern portion of the property, uh, where there's an existing trail. A permanent easement of 25 by 25 for utility purposes, this would be in conjunction with an existing monitoring well that we've talked about before, which is on the east side of the property. Uh, a permanent easement of 25 feet in width for utility and drainage purposes along the entire perimeter of the property. Restrictive covenants, uh, and this is in the middle of page three, buyer on behalf of itself, uh, shall not engage in any activities on the property which would interfere with or be a hazard to flight of aircraft, I don't see that as being a huge issue at this point. Quick claim deed, a duly executed quick claim deed conveying the entirety of the property subject to seller's reserved interests and restrictions and covenants. Contingencies, this is on the bottom of page four, buyer's contingency on the closing date title to the property shall be acceptable to the buyer, inspection due diligence period, um, and then on, uh, page five, the property will be subdivided from the land. Seller shall have granted any easements for legal access to utilities, services extending public water, sanitary and storm sewer services to the property. Uh, on the top of page six, seller's contingencies, the city planning commission shall review the sale and provide recommendation on the proposed conveyance. Wilmer city council shall pass an ordinance authorizing the sale. Pro rations, so this is, uh, section nine, buyer will pay all costs of the title commitment. The seller shall pay the state deed tax, uh, general real estate taxes and installments of special assessments payable will be paid by the seller, and that goes on from there. Uh, buyer will pay the cost of recording the seller's quick claim deed and well certificate, uh, part E, um, professional consultant fees, buyer shall be responsible for legal fees and/or other professional or administrative fees incurred by or in connection with the sale and conveyance of the property. Number 10, seller shall convey the entirety of its interest in the property to buyer at closing by delivery of a quick claim deed. Now I'm going to skip to page 12. So at the top of page 12. Uh, what we're talking about here is in a development agreement, so tonight we're talking purchase agreement, there's also a development agreement that governs how, uh, things occur on the site and who's responsible for what. Development agreement required prior to, prior to closing, seller and buyer shall enter into and record a development agreement, which agreement is expected to contain the following. A, buyer shall be responsible for the management and associated costs for extending utility lines as required to connect to existing city utility infrastructure, so if they're coming from Wilmer Avenue, or they're coming in from the west, they are responsible for that. B, buyer shall be responsible at buyer's sole cost for relocating any drainage and other utility infrastructure existing on the property, including, uh, existing stormwater main that exists and crosses from the northeast to the southwest portion of the property. All such utility relocation shall be completed to the satisfaction of the seller's city engineer. Those are the main components, I'm not sure if, Scott, you have other, Robert Scott, uh, have other, uh, things that you would highlight, um, but those would be the primary things that I would like to mention about the purchase agreement. I would be happy to try to stand for any questions that you might have regarding this transaction.
Carl.
Uh, Mr. Bachman, the, the parking at grade, um, is that going to raise the height of the structure, I mean, how tall are we looking at now?
Um, I will defer to Tom on that, but three stories typically is going to be less than 40 feet. So we should not have any issue with FAA.
Any other questions? All right.
In terms of actions, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, basically there's three motions that would be considered, uh, a motion, a resolution approving the purchase agreement between the two parties, a motion to introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale, and then three, uh, authorizing the publication of the order. And then three, authorizing the publication of the ordinance.
All right, Audrey.
I have a question, just, or is it okay to ask that now before we have a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Would you just speak to the, the number of units that our housing study showed that, that we needed for senior housing and kind of just a comment in general of how this, where this would help us, or how this would help us?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, be happy to do that. As people are aware, last year, about a little over a year ago, we had a housing study that was completed. And we, as we undertook that, what was the, one of the takeaways that I had out of that was the biggest need was for senior housing. The study indicated that we needed 615 senior housing units by 2030, which is now a little over six and a half years away. Even if, say, Bethesda Phase One and Phase Two, and KIRA Senior Living are both fully built as planned, we still will have only addressed half of our need. So there's, there's a big need for senior housing that is ongoing, both in Wilmer and in our rural parts of this county.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement between the city of Wilmer and KIRA, selling 5.54 acres and of land in Swanson Field for the construction of an affordable senior living project.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. You had another one, right?
Yes, introduction of ordinance.
What'd you say, Aaron?
Introduction of ordinance.
Of them, introduction of the ordinance, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Kind of motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, that motion carries.
I'll make a motion to authorize the publication of the ordinance authorizing the sale of 5.54 acres of land in Swanson Field to KIRA by summary.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. All right, E, call for city council work session for Monday, February 26 at 6:00 PM. Let's, let's leave it.
Mayor, we're on D, introduction of the ordinance amending. Chapter three, alcoholic beverages.
All right, I'll catch up.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'll, to address you and the council from here.
Please do.
So tonight before you, city staff have identified and reviewed several areas of chapter three of the municipal code regarding alcoholic beverages. Among the recommended changes include several references for language to be more inclusive and update the city's, and to an update the city's insurance requirements. The city's insurance requirements have been in the application process for 25-plus years, and all current license holders already meet the language that's being recommended before you tonight. These ordinance amendments have also been reviewed and updated and provided by the city attorney. Tonight would be the introduction of the ordinance and to publish the ordinance by summary.
We need a motion.
So moved. Make that motion.
We got a motion.
Second.
We got a second, discussion? Audrey.
Thank you. I had a question, and I apologize if it's not even in this, this section here, but we approved two permits tonight. And I'm curious about the timeframe, because I know we've had to have a special meeting, like if somebody needs a license for an event. Is there a delay? As it references a timeframe for getting that approval? I noticed on the two boxes on the beginning that it said there isn't a delay, and I was just curious if that's part of this ordinance, or if that's just a process. I think it said class one cities had to have a 60-day delay or something. I'm just curious if that has anything to do with this.
Nothing comes to the top of mind, Councilmember Nelson.
Okay, so.
The delay, the requirements.
I was trying to think of things that made it easier, and I was curious about that one.
Tom.
Now, with this, with the cannabis, with cannabis being able to be mixed in with the alcohol on beverages, is that going to follow underneath the alcohol or the cannabis side? Do we know that, or are we waiting on the state?
So that is not what this ordinance would, would allow at this time. Only breweries can sell infused products at this time, and that is allowed by state statute already. Or THC products, I should say. This ordinance that's before you tonight is purely the alcoholic beverages chapter. And the only thing that we're talking about in this ordinance, or the amendments to this, would be insurance requirements and then just language updates. But to your question, I don't, it's not part of this. I have, to the best of my knowledge, on sale, retailers are not able to sell infused beverages at this time, excluding breweries, but.
Okay.
And we may need to research that a little bit more closely for you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we've got a motion, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Now.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interject again, but.
Go ahead, I'm not, I'm not going to go before you say.
There is a, a second motion to publish by summary.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye, or.
Roll call.
Roll call. Discussion and. If we have any discussion, if we don't, roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That, that passes. Now do I get to do the? The work session?
You and I both. So we were planning on having a work session next Monday, February 26, on the broadband. We just received an email this afternoon from hometown that they're not going to be quite ready to have all the information put together for the work session. So we'd like to move that work session to March, Monday, March 11. And we'll go from there. So next Monday, we have nothing for work session. We'd like to have it on Monday, March 11. And on the agenda for that night right now is the broadband.
At the utilities or where?
We haven't checked with the utilities, so we'd like it at the utilities if they're not, if they're open.
Okay, so. We need a motion to set that work session for 6:00 PM on March 11. Location had to be determined.
So moved.
We got a motion.
Second.
And a second, discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. We don't have any community pride announcements?
No, we do have, or go back to.
The logo.
Or the.
Nine a. Logo. Who's?
That was on me. Yep. I would like to reconsider the vote that we had the other week on the logo. I received an email from Paul Springer, a lot of phone calls, a lot of text messages, a lot of face-to-face. Social media's kind of blown up on it. Our constituents are not happy with this new logo. So I would like to make a motion to go back to using the red W flag logo.
Yes, Robert.
Apologies, Mayor, city council. Given there was a motion passed at the previous meeting to approve the rebranding initiative, what would be required at this time? If I understand the intent of this motion correctly, it would be a motion to rescind that vote from the previous meeting, which would then restore the original motion to the council. So I believe you intend to make a motion to rescind the vote approving the rebranding initiative?
Yes.
And that's a, that motion to rescind is just like a regular city council motion that requires a second, can be discussed. And then if the motion passes, that means the approval is rescinded and the motion is back before you for consideration.
So you're introducing the rescinding motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a second, discussion.
Like I said, I, I don't know about the, any other council members, they have received phone calls, emails, or anything else like this, but our constituents are not happy about it, and it's all over social media. And a lot of them are wishing to go back to the, to the red W. And I kind of back them on this, and I think that we need to listen to our constituents. I'm coming forward with their concerns to bring it back to what they want.
You know. I'd like to go back to our old Minnesota flag. But we've done the process. We've looked at the possibilities, we've discussed it, and we made that decision. I feel that we got to stay with what our decision was to go ahead with the logo. We, we spent time on it. I think it looks very nice. I have people that have called me to say it doesn't look nice, but you're always going to have that in those situations. So. Carl.
I was basically going to say what you just said, Mr. Mayor, that I, I received one email from a, a person that didn't like it. And I've seen the Facebook posts, mainly on the KWM site. You always hear the negative, you always hear the negative. I also received positive comments from people in various places, not as many as, as we saw the negative. But you don't hear from the positive, don't hear from people that are okay with it. You know, it changes hard. People were comfortable with the W, they, they liked the red W. This is going to grow on people. And, and I think to, to rescind our previous vote and go back, you know, we talk about being fiscally responsible and wasting money. I just see that as a big step backwards. If we rescind the previous vote and basically have to start all over again. So.
Anybody else? Audrey.
Thank you, Marys. I struggle with this one. I'm a fan of red, and I've stated that I think Wilmer represents red. So I struggle with losing that identity that we have with our school and with our college, and even our event center is red. So I struggle with that. I feel uncomfortable right now. We received an hour-long presentation on how this logo was put together and the, the meaning behind that. And so I'm uncomfortable that it has become tainted without the community having an understanding of that same thing. And so we perhaps erred in not making that presentation to the entire community to have an understanding of how we got to where we are and the options with color, that we can still go back to red if we want to, or some other colors that were in the palette with that. And so going forward, I think we have a responsibility to try to salvage this a little bit and help the community to understand the thought process that went behind it with the person that we worked with and the font of the, matching the building on the railroad station and some of the other things, and how that is going to be used as, what will we be marketing? Most concerns that I think I heard was just an expense from an expense standpoint. And I think we did ask that question. It will be expensive to do over a period of time. We have agreed not to do that this year, I believe, I forget the figure that's in the budget. And so I do think that's a reality, that to get a clear identity and to have a unified, there will need to be money spent, and that's something I think that the community has to come to terms with. The signs that are up right now were paid for by the community. They weren't paid for by the city. There was fundraising that was done to put up the signs on the outside. And so I struggle with us changing that and looking to the community to help us, those types of things. But I think we're here now. We made a decision to look at this last year. That's when we should have said no, if we didn't want to do it. We're here now, and I would like to see us find a way to make this a positive thing for our community going forward.
Yes.
I think now would be a good time to remind the public of when the open house is at the auditorium.
Open house is tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at the auditorium. Everybody is welcome, and they will meet Jeff Johnson, who is the CEO of the company Replaced that we had hired to do this project. And he will give you a further understanding about the whole process of what it took to get to where we are today, along with what branding really means and all the, all that goes into a branding. It's just not a logo. There's a lot more in the background that goes with this.
Yes, Justin.
Ms. Valiant, is that something that can be recorded and posted for people?
Yes, it will be recorded and posted.
When, when was that announced, that it was tomorrow?
We announced it at the last council meeting.
Okay.
And we also posted, it was also in the paper.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
I just want to say that, you know, people here, we got a new logo, and they just see the one logo. But we got a whole style guide. It's not just the one thing, and they have it in different colors. And it was all put together very nice and professional, so we can use this for all kinds of things. It wasn't just a logo.
And I like some of the, the thoughts that went into it. The individual department. And I like some of the thoughts that went into it. The individual department logos, the bridge, the railroad tracks. I just, I do like it myself. I feel that we've made a decision, and I think we go ahead with it. But you still have a motion and a second.
Yep.
And if we're going to vote now, if you want to stay with the current, the new logo, or if you want to return to the old logo.
Mayor and council, if I may, the motion on the table is to rescind the previous approval of the rebranding initiative, so an aye vote would be a motion to approve rescinding it. So that would be, I guess, a motion, an aye vote would be against the new logo, if you want to simplify it.
Okay.
Pardon, how do you rephrase that again? Because I would assume that I would mean you're for rescinding it.
Your motion is to rescind, so.
Anyone who votes yes is voting in favor of rescinding the previous approval.
In favor of your motion.
Yep.
All right. So.
I have one question.
Yes, Mike.
We had, do we have council members that were on this committee that decided this? Can you elaborate with that a little bit, talk about it, why you came up with this?
Who served on it? Vicki and Julie.
Just. We, we.
No, okay.
We met with Replaced several times, and they, first they came up with, was it seven different designs, and then we narrowed it down, and then they tweaked some things. I believe it was sent out to certain stakeholders, and they got to give their opinions, too. I mean, it took several months. It was very thought out. They walked around our community, took pictures, they thought of everything. I mean, the font for Wilmer came from the train station, just an old sign that was there. Nobody else will have that font. It's very specific to us.
I just, one of the, one of the previous logo designs dealt a lot with buffalo fish, because that has to do with Candy Ojai and our chief Candy Ojai. That seemed at the beginning where that was going to go, but then some people felt that that would be having to explain too much about the buffalo fish and its meaning to Wilmer, and so then that kind of guided it more towards a W for Wilmer and the trains, because that is a huge part of our community, and especially even now with the, with the industrial park going in, and, and just the industrial development that's happening in the community. It was just a more industrial look, and then the heart came in as far as being welcoming. Everybody is welcome to Wilmer, so it wasn't too edgy with the railroad tracks.
But yet, that's our beginning. That's what brought Wilmer to be, was the railroad.
Mayor. Also, the heart of the, that's in the W, is because Wilmer is the heart of Candy Ojai County, and that's where the Minnesota Crossroads comes in, too, because we have so many intersections of major railroad, for one thing, major industry, and our Highway 23, 71, Highway 12. So that's where the Minnesota Crossroads comes in. And Jeff Johnson will be there tomorrow, and he will explain their thought process on all this also. There were over 55 stakeholders that reviewed through this process, and all the information through this process also, I want to make known, was sent to council members for their input, too, and so that's how all this was developed.
I would say be there tomorrow. Jeff is quite the cheerleader.
Yep.
One more question.
Yes, Mike.
Did the railroad have any input or any discussion on this when they saw this? Did they make any comment at all? Have they made any comment about this?
I don't think so.
Nothing?
I have heard from some people that, with the feedback, they would have liked to have seen more community input, for people to choose. I think there was an expectation that maybe there would be three choices that the public would have some input on. I think that's some of the, maybe some of the disappointment or frustration with the process.
I was just curious to know, because it does spell out the railroad, right? I mean, there's no doubt about that. I was just wondering if they have everything to comment and say, good job, thank you, whatever. You know? I mean, it's a big deal.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
We, but again, going back, I think I'd made this comment before. You don't learn, you don't, I don't say you don't learn, you don't appreciate all of the things that we have in this community that we had to choose from for ideas. So when, when these guys talked about the company, going to other communities, you know, if they had a lake, that was a big thing that they could identify their communities with. We had so many, I call them assets, that we had to choose from. We had lakes, we had, help me out, so then we had the railroad, which was very significant. You think about the train out at the Historical Society and the tracks itself, and what we're doing now in industrial park. That was a big part of our identity. There was a number of things.
Coffee.
Oh, yep, coffee. That was a big part of the discussion, of course, was the coffee cup or a coffee pot. There is another community that had a coffee pot and says that they're the coffee capital, so then that got to be a thing.
Where the lakes meet the prairie.
Yep, where the lakes meet the prairie was another significant, but then again, that's a whole nother area where Candy Ojai County, the city of Wilmer, was pretty significant with the trains, as far as kind of, I think, how it got down to that. It's, yeah, it was a process. When they talk about some of these other communities, you know, they really don't, like, one of the communities we went to, there was, they centered everything around clocks, because they did have three clocks in their community, so that was their logo. They didn't have lakes, they didn't have an industrial park, they didn't have anything else to draw from but some clocks that were on some buildings, and then they went with that. They went with that as that being their identity. So if nothing else, I mean, one thing that I did come away with from, from this whole process was just how fortunate we are that there are so many things that identify our area. And it was tough. It's like, okay, so then do you, it was very significant. If you talk about people feeling very strongly about the coffee, some people being very strongly about another part that would get too busy. You could have four different quadrants to what there was, and they had to narrow it down to one to make it simplistic and try to identify us individually, uniquely, for our area. It was a lot of, a lot of discussion and a lot of thought.
Yes.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
No.
Councilmember Davis.
No.
Councilmember Shuldiss.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
No.
Councilmember Osmus.
No.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
No.
No.
Motion fails.
One aye, six nays.
All right. Anything else come to be for the council tonight? If not.
One thing, it's not really a community pride thing, but just like to bring up what took place in Burnsville, and how sad, you know, our whole community, but everybody has anything to do with, especially with first responders of any kind. What a tragic, tragic thing. We just send our prayers out to the families and everybody, and all the people who work with them.
Thank you, Mike. There's anything else?
Wilmer girls hockey is in the state. We need to mention that.
As is wrestling.
Here we go.
Audrey.
I would just comment there's an opportunity for council members to attend. League of Minnesota Cities has their Day at the Capitol, Day at the, I forgot what it's called, Day at the Hill, coming up, and so does the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and there's lots of legislation going on that affects our community and affects cities, both, lots of different things, not to mention bonding. I think we have lots of things that we should be working with our legislators with, and would encourage you to think about attending one or both of them.
You don't have the dates on you? I don't have. I can look it up.
I can look them up or ask Leslie to send them out, if that would be.
We'll be sending them out again.
That'd be great. Okay. No other business? Move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.